We'd like to call our special planning commission meeting together for March 22, 2017. First thing on the agenda is the North Highland Avenue Planning Study 2016 S-102, City of Murfreesboro Planning Department Advocate. Mr. Bromley.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Wade, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission and members of the public. We have the special called Planning Commission Meeting to have a public hearings regarding the North Highland Avenue Study and the Historic Bottoms Planning Study. But first, I'd like to make an announcement. If the cable department could put the computer screen up on the television. That is baby girl Green. Ms. Margaret Ann Green, who works at the Planning Department, had her baby this morning at 4:15. She is yet to be named, but she's eight pounds, five ounces. Mama and baby are doing well, and so we'd like to congratulate Margaret Ann and her husband, Chris, and their little girl, Hadley, on the arrival of a new baby girl to their family. So wanted to let everybody know about that exciting news first and foremost.
Right.
Thanks. Vice Chairman Wade, now to get into our public hearings, the first one is with regards to the North Highland Avenue Planning Study. And first, I want to preface these two studies with a little bit of background from the Murfreesboro 2035 Plan. The Murfreesboro 2035 Plan and its land use policies is very supportive of downtown investment and downtown redevelopment, and these plans are kind of an offshoot of the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan. And so what I'd like to do is kind of go over a few of the land use policies that are contained within the 2035 Plan. One, to continue to support the revitalization and redevelopment of Murfreesboro's downtown. Two, to promote compatible mixed-use developments within existing urban areas. Plan for a variety of residential housing types and densities, and create mixed-use centers which enhance the sense of community and reduce the need to travel long distances for employment and/or services. Also, in our economic development, in the economic development chapter of the plan, one of its key strategies for economic development in our city is to invest downtown. The economic development chapter talks about how economic development in today's marketplace is all about where the employees live, and employers want to go where there is the workforce. And one of the most attractive things that a community can have is a vibrant and healthy downtown. And so what we want to do is to continue to invest in that downtown and invest in the future of downtown because of its great importance to our community. With that in mind, these two studies were commissioned by the city council, and our consultant Reagan Smith Associates and their subconsultants have endeavored to bring these two plans before us with a great deal of public input from the community. And I'll just kind of go over a little bit of that public input process with you right now. In the spring of last year, Reagan Smith had a variety of stakeholder interviews in which they interviewed property owners, institutional representatives from institutional uses such as churches, business owners, members of Main Street, and got a lot of great input in that manner. And then during the summertime, we had a visioning workshop in which members of the community, and this was put out there, open to anybody who wanted to attend, members of the community rolled up their sleeves and got to work brainstorming ideas with members of city staff and of our consultants who helped to facilitate the brainstorming session. And we arrived with big ideas about both plans and what the public wants to see in these two areas. And finally, we had two open houses, and the two open houses for the North Highland Study both generated nearly 100 people at each open house. We got great feedback, and those were opportunities for the public to review the progress on the plans and give their input. So we're very proud of our public outreach efforts, and especially the hard work that Ms. Terry Sterling Donovan with Sterling Communications did on behalf of Reagan Smith and the city. We also, as a very, very valuable component to the North Highland Study, had a steering committee. And the steering committee met five times and continually gave input to the city staff and our consultants on how to make these plans better. Donald, in a moment, when we have the Historic Bottoms Public Hearing, will recognize the steering committee members who were on the Bottoms Steering Committee, but right now, I'd like to recognize the steering committee members that were on the North Highland Avenue Planning Study. First of all, he's not with us anymore, but Mr. Doug Young, our former vice mayor and vice chair, and we certainly want to recognize Vice Mayor Young. He was a visionary for our downtown, a longtime member of Main Street. He had a love for downtown, and if any of you are familiar with Main Street, and they bestowed upon him the inaugural award for just his love of downtown, and I can't help but think that he's right now smiling on us in the work that we're doing to further the downtown. So a big thank you to Vice Mayor Young. Also, our current vice chair, Mr. Wade, served on the steering committee. And for the others, when I read your name, if you don't mind standing up and being recognized, Ms. Andrea Lowry, Mr. Bill Huddleston, who I don't believe is here with us tonight, Brian Robertson, Gloria Bonner, John Thayer, Lisa Ishide, Melanie Davenport, Patty Miller, Scott Kimberly, and Thomas Rowe. We would like to thank these volunteers for giving of their time. They met with us in the evening time and gave of their valuable time to serve on these committees, and we'd like to thank you very much. With that being said, I will yield the floor to Mr. Kevin Gunther with Reagan Smith Associates. Kevin has a brief PowerPoint presentation that he would like to give you. And with that being said, just to kind of set up the action that, or that is not Kevin, that is Randy Caldwell.
I'm just going to start. Now, Kevin will be the main speaker. I just want to say a few words.
He must be Kevin's IT help tonight, I'm not sure. Just kidding. But what I'd like to do is kind of set up what the action will be tonight. State law grants planning commissions the authority to adopt land use plans, and so after the public hearings tonight, and there'll be two public hearings, and there will be two actions taken, one on the North Highland Study and one on the Historic Bottoms Study. The planning commission's vote tonight will be to adopt both of these plans. Now, the plans will then be forwarded to the city council. The city council, in its capacity to review rezonings and to set the budget and approve capital expenditures, will be, a resolution will be forwarded to the city council for their support and acknowledgement of the plan and that it will serve them in future decisions regarding land use and capital expenditures. So tonight, the planning commission will, if it sees fit, will formally adopt the plan if it sees fit, and then a resolution would move to the city council for its, in support and acknowledgement of the plan and its recommendations. So with that being said, I'll yield to Mr. Caldwell and to Mr. Gunther, and be happy to take any questions at any time from the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to say a few words. I know, you know, we've been before you quite a bit already and gone into quite a bit of detail about the plan, so we'll be very brief tonight in our explanation and allow this to be what it is, you know, allow the public to speak. But as a design team, I just want to say we're really excited to be here. This has been a long, deliberate process, a very fun process, and what made it fun was the fact that we had the public involved in this project. I just wanted to personally thank the steering committee for both projects tonight. Your input was valuable, being at every meeting, I mean, it was just a great, great process. I want to thank the public, too, because they stayed involved through the whole process. I think Matthew mentioned how many people we had show up at the various meetings, and their input really shaped this plan to what it is before you today. So that's all I wanted to say today was just that thanks, and you know, how excited we are about hopefully bringing this to the finish line tonight, and this is just the beginning. This is the vision. Then next comes the implementation side, which will be the next steps to help keep the momentum going here if you so choose to adopt this tonight. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin and let him kind of briefly go over the plans.
Thank you. Well, very good. It is a pleasure to be here tonight, and this is the culmination of a lot of hard work, creative thought, and a very active engagement in the process. So if I could get the screen on the computer pulled up? Yes, thank you. And as was mentioned before, you know, this was a very engaged steering committee, very focused staff input and very energetic community input. So we are looking at two studies tonight, this being the first of those two, North Highland, and if you'll see in your map, it's the area that's highlighted in yellow. But really, what I want to point out is that these are, even though they're two different studies, they focus around the downtown and the square as the core, and there's a lot of overlap between them, and what we found is that we were, you know, really engaging in something that covered the whole downtown area. Matthew did a great job of highlighting all the different public input sessions, so I won't dive into detail, but I will say it was a lot of fun, very energetic, and we got a lot of engagement. And part of that input was very quantitative and part of it was very qualitative, and you know, the quantitative part was the opportunity for us to get very direct input on priorities. And what you see here in this part of the study in page 17 is those big ideas that surfaced that Matthew had mentioned. I'm going to briefly touch on those because this is really kind of the emphasis of what was crafted out of all our efforts. First being that expanded downtown, we need a bigger footprint in Murfreesboro. The central business district deserves to be bigger, and that includes crossing over Broad Street, which you'll see is part of the Historic Bottoms area. A greater mixture of uses and increased density, as Matthew had mentioned, that's part of the plan that was brought out in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. And the economic research that was done for this supported several things. One of those was there is an opportunity for more office space downtown, and part of that is the need to highlight increased new buildings that would come in and have more use and a mixture of uses. And then the other thing is that there was a need for residential downtown. That's going to drive some of your commercial uses and commercial opportunities. So in fact, the market research showed that there's as much as 400,000 square feet that could be accommodated in both these study areas. Now, that's with the caveat that we create a strong destination point to bring people there. Another thing that rose to the surface was preserving historic and cultural places. You've got, if you think about it, Oakland's, you've got the Discovery Center, the Bradley Museum, you have Cannonsburg, you have the Historic Downtown. So is there a way that we could enhance all those things and connect them? We've talked about even maybe like a cultural trail that people could take once they arrive downtown that connect all those things together. Not only with increasing the residential housing opportunities, that was an important facet, but also preserving some of the neighborhoods that we have there now that have a very strong single-family character. So that was highlighted as important. As much as we have some great parks and open space in the downtown area, the need that we definitely saw was to connect those things. By connecting them, we're going to enhance the opportunities of those things. And then finally, one of the things that rose to the surface was a need for an increased mobility, and that means not just automobiles, but pedestrians, bicycles, and mass transit opportunities. So those were the big ideas that surfaced. This is the future land map that was generated from the study, and you'll see that these are what we call character areas. This is not a zoning map, but we hope that if this plan is adopted, these areas would start to have a zoning overlay created that would line up with what we think the characters are, that would fit. As you see, the red area, that's an increased downtown district. The brown and the orange are areas where you have a higher mixture of residential. The pink areas are what we're calling mixed-use nodes, and those are areas where we really see a concentration opportunity of greater density and a greater mixture of not only residential but office, commercial, mixed-in. And then the yellow areas are what we highlighted as areas that were very important to keep as single-family, to keep as those existing neighborhoods that are now in place. So with this expansion of the red, what do we mean by that? Well, I'm just going to summarize that in some very general ways. One is, as I said, expand the footprint, cross Broad Street, create a sense of gateway into downtown. And we think Lidle Street and Church Street are great opportunities to create a sense of gateway. And then it's really allowing, you know, the densities of these areas to increase and be more like a downtown area. So these are some images that kind of show how that looks and how it feels, and you'll see some things come to the surfaces in these images. One, the streetscape has a very strong personal scale, and there's a lot of relationship at a pedestrian level to the streetscape. Number two, there's a high level of architectural detail, and even though you have density, you still have details that highlight the buildings in a way that creates a sense of place. And then number three, you've got dynamic public spaces. So that's what some of these images are showing for the downtown area. The other thing that came out loud and clear was the art and entertainment district being as an opportunity, and we highlighted in the highlighted cyan, kind of purple hashed area there, what we think could be a very good art and entertainment district. That gets back to, again, the comprehensive plan seeing, create a destination point to your downtown. You need an area that's walkable. You need an area that has existing cultural elements, like I had already described, and then you need a place where you have some old buildings that have historic character, but you also need opportunities to expand new development. So we thought that what we've highlighted here with that art and entertainment district was picking up all of those different facets. This is also something we vetted with the public and asked them where they thought they would like this district to fall, and this is where it landed. Here again, just some brief images, some of these near and far of what we think the art and entertainment district could look and feel like. The other thing I want to touch on because there was a lot of discussion about it with North Highland was this idea of mixing residential uses into the downtown area, and we called it kind of the missing middle. What I mean by that is you don't have to have strictly an apartment complex or single-family residential. What we're looking for is opportunities to have a mixture of those two things together in some cases where you might have one, two, or three, up to four unit buildings that allow for more than just those two extremes as far as residential communities. And these are some images that kind of depict how that could work. And if you see, we think that the key to making that work is, number one, relationship to the street. Just because you have something that's not single-family doesn't mean that you can't have front porches, a strong relationship to the street, highlight of some landscape elements. The other facet of this design consideration is where do you park? You probably want to park in the side in the rear of your buildings, and then the other part is, you know, creating a vernacular, what I call architectural vernacular, that ties into some of the existing single-family residents that we have downtown. So creating some kind of design guidelines that pick up these important characters, we think is an important implementation phase. We looked at the streets and how they could accommodate pedestrians and bicycles without having to necessarily change the dynamics of the right-of-way by huge numbers, and a lot of that ties into reducing some of your travel lanes and allowing for pedestrian and bicycle way. And then we took the economic studies that we had done, and we overlaid several different development scenarios to try to show, you know, how could this look in the future? And that was based on actual market conditions. So I think the power of that is by sleeving together market conditions and the land uses and putting those into a projection of what could be in the future, we came up with, I think, some very exciting opportunities, and that's illustrated here in this perspective. And what we're looking at now is if you are heading down Broad Street, heading, you know, into downtown, and you can see the Lidle Street Roundabout, which has already been created on the left-hand side of the screen. Imagine if you had, you know, some very high-end residential and commercial mixed-use buildings. You'll see the rooftop pool and rooftop, you know, terrace there. Imagine if you had public art as part of that open space in your roundabout. If you look towards the center of the illustration, you'll kind of see that sense of weaving green space, our greenway. We need to highlight Town Creek and Lidle Creek, make those water features, those natural elements, a part of downtown again. And then you'll also see some of the buildings that were expressed in those images, what can fill out, what could actually happen in this area to make it feel like you've really got downtown that's part of and extending over Broad Street. We think this is an exciting vision, and we think it's very real and it could happen. So the last thing I'm going to touch on here is the need for implementation. You know, we hope that planning commission and everyone present here tonight is going to feel that this plan should be adopted. That's kind of the first step. With that being said, there are five different things that need to go into place. The first is planning and code, so making a big plan that casts a strong vision creates a living document that carries concepts into reality and shapes the details of the future. That's the planning side of this, that'll take zoning overlays to see it happen. Then you have infrastructure. So I know that the city's been very positive and very aggressive about finding the right places to put your capital investments to create multiple returns on your investments. And usually, investment in public infrastructure generates private investment. That private investment will bring public return of tax revenue. The third facet is financing, and you know, oftentimes, the greatest financing leverage comes from the public-private collaboration. So as these spaces develop, we hope that we can get that type of collaboration and look for local funds to be matched with state and federal funds. And then management development and development of the space is just as important as building it. You can build a space, if you don't manage it, you're going to lose its value. So frequently, the way people use a space mirrors the design and management expectations we place on it. And then finally, marketing. You know, part of what's going to make this succeed is the idea of creating that sense of destination, and marketing is what drives people to come here to Murfreesboro. Branding is what will bring them back again and again and say they had this distinct memory of what a great place it was and is. So I want to leave plenty of room for discussion and feedback and questions, so I'll finish my presentation at this point. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you. Commission? Anybody have any questions or comments before we open the public hearing? All right. Thank you. We're now ready to open our public hearing. If you have not been here before, I want to give you some ruse that we go by. If you're an individual, you have three minutes to speak. If you're representing in a group, you've got five minutes to speak, and please make all your comments addressed to the commission up here, and please give us your name and address. It's open.
My name is Brian Burns. I'm with Blue Sky Construction. You know, we are very excited about the Highlands project here they're doing.
Mr. Burns, what's your address?
I'm sorry. It's 2032 Jose Way.
Thank you.
From Murfreesboro. We are purchasing, we have in our contract, I guess, probably the largest piece of property on the Highlands, which is the 12 acres across the street from the police station, and my main reason was coming and making sure we were, what we were planning on doing, which is going to be brownstone-type townhomes, a very upper-end product, was going to kind of fit in with the plan, and it sounds like, from my discussions with the planning department, and after listening here, it sounds like we're going to fit in pretty good. We're submitting a project next week with our, to bring up in front of the planning commission here shortly after that, I guess. So very excited about this, and hopefully our project will fit into the plan very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Vice Chairman Wade and members of the Planning Commission, thanks for letting me speak tonight. My name is Bill Jakes. I live at 224 North Manny Avenue. Just want to follow up on what Mr. Burns had to say about the 11-acre property on Highland. Just a little backstory that I think is worth sharing with everybody is this property was actually approved for development about 13 years ago. The owners of this property, this used to be an 18-acre tract, the owners of this property donated seven acres to the city of Murfreesboro that sits directly behind Oakland's. The city still has ownership of that property, and this 11-acre tract was completely approved for development back then, about 10 years ago. So what we're really concerned about, and I'm here speaking, representing the family, I do represent it for the sale of this property, what we're really concerned about is that this plan doesn't get in the way of what the deal we basically have going already. This property is under contract. Like you said, it is for a residential development. This is a local builder, a local developer. All this money's going to stay in our town, and I can attest to the fact as a Realtor that there's an extreme need for housing in our downtown area. So I feel like what this developer has proposed is not only going to be a good fit for our downtown, but you know, it's going to look good, it's going to fit into this plan. So I believe that's about all I wanted to add, and if anybody has any questions, we have to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Jakes.
Thank you.
My name's, excuse me, my name is Steve Baughman. I live at 315 North Manny and have been a longtime resident of downtown. I've bought one of the original houses that was in the Manny Avenue expansion, the Manny Edition, that when Oakland's was actually auctioned off in 1880, and I've restored that house back to a single-family dwelling as well as a number of small structures. Had small businesses here in Murfreesboro, been involved, some of you know, for a long time with Manny Avenue Projects, Uncle Dave Makin, you know, the Jazz Fest, from concept to seeing it fruition. I'm just sort of a kind of a back, behind-the-scenes guy that likes to get involved and think this is my community. I'm all for this. I don't lightly want to see it get hung up in great plan like the Manny Avenue Projects and all the monies here and not actually. and all the monies here, and not actually seeing it in fruition. But as a private residence, living right in the downtown middle of it, I think this is a good plan overall. And I just want to thank you for your consideration with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baughman. Anyone else?
My name is Brian Robertson. I live at 914 Scepter Drive, and I speak as an individual tonight who is a lifelong resident and is a daytime business dweller and county employee on the square. And would just like to speak in favor of really both of these plans tonight. I'm more familiar with the Highland Avenue Study Plan. Would just like to punctuate what's obvious about the quality of the materials presented in both of these plans, and the level of input that went into them, I thought was just excellent. The level of analysis and just all the materials were excellent. And to come out of that, come out of a project like this, a government project like this, with a plan that you can look through and actually get excited about our downtown, I think is pretty cool in its own regard. And also, like Randy and Kevin said, I think the real, though it may be easy to vote for a gorgeous plan tonight, I think the key will be in the implementation. And as a Main Street Board member, I'm particularly interested in us having a level of intentionality and coordination that's yet unprecedented in terms of making sure that developers and others are aware of what needs to come to our downtown that fits with our vision. There are so many organizations that have so many different approaches that really look forward, like I say, to a level of more involved coordination between Chamber of Commerce, Main Street, City of Murfreesboro, and others. Whether that come in the form of a dedicated employ at the City of Murfreesboro, however that may coalesce, I think that will be very key. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
Hi, I'm Leslie Russell Yost. I'm at 415 North Spring Street in downtown. I'm a downtown resident. I'm here to represent locally-owned Borough. We're a nonprofit organization that is here to support our nonprofit, our local and independent businesses. But we want to support the growth and continued investment in our community. And also, these, the drafts of these studies are just forming a great foundation for the, like this continued investment in the heart of Murfreesboro, which is the heart of Tennessee. And so, locally-owned Borough looks forward to the future of Murfreesboro based on these drafts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yost.
I'm Bart Walker, downtown property owner and business owner. Live at 2519 Cabot Court. I want to applaud the City of Murfreesboro for both of these concepts. They add excitement to the downtown area. And not only will they bring in visitors, tourists, but most importantly, this concept will bring enjoyment to the people who live here. I just want to be sure that we include public art throughout this area, perhaps starting with history, like Asheville, North Carolina has done. This is something that has been lacking in our community, and this is an opportunity to bring this to the forefront and make the heart of Tennessee even better than it already is. Again, thank you for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Good evening. My name is Paul Wilson. I live at 1001 East Main Street. And I appreciate the leadership that the city and all of you have shown in doing this. I'm for it. I hope you will adopt it. I just, I know we're not at the point where we can tweak the plan just a little bit, but I came to the very first design, and then the open house on Bell Street. And I've continued on the same little thing as it, East Lidle Street is a direct shot coming up through the new roundabout, past the Judicial Center. And then, as you come past, the city's acquired the property of the old First Methodist Church Synergy Bank. And at that corner there, you have kind of commercial note. But once you progress down East Lidle, beyond that point where Bullock, Flydenhornsby, and Jean Anne Rogers are, you get into a pretty significant residential area until you get to Highland, which is the gist of the study. And then, once you go over Highland on East Lidle, you've got Central Magnet School on the right, you've got very nice residential on the left, and then you come down to Bilbro and Cherry Lane, and you've got Campus School. And then, when you get down to now MTSU Boulevard, there will be a new stoplight there. And my concern is, is that in that section between MTSU Boulevard all the way up to Highland, that's going to be a very difficult transportation section. My fear is that will become the new entrance into MTSU and 29,000 kids driving in every day. And so, I'm for the plan. I hope you'll adopt it, and I appreciate all the work that's been done. I would just like to ask that the traffic engineers pay particular attention to the effect that that's going to have when you've got Central Magnet School, Campus School, and MTSU all getting in and out in that one area. That's my input. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Bobby Turman. I live at 420 East Burton Street. One of the points that I'd like to address is the 11-acre tract that's now under contract for development on North Highland. It's no secret that there are a lot of people who would like to have seen that land go towards development with the Oakland's Mansion properties. I don't see how that's going to happen now, and I'm not privy as to why that fell through. It's my understanding that at one point, it was a possibility. If there's going to be residential area developed there, what I would urge is to work with the Oakland's Mansion Board and with James Manning, and let them have a capacity as a strong advisory voice in helping the developers to develop that area. There's concerns about historical growth there and trees, archaeological possibilities that are there. And we've seen in the city already where we can incorporate wetlands areas and other natural growth, like the Discovery Center and the Black Fox Springs, into a residential area. And I would like to see something like that happen with this area, if it's going to be developed as residential, rather than just it be mowed down and paved over. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turman. Anyone else? All right. Public hearing's now closed. Commission or staff? Mr. Whitaker?
Chairman, thank you. I'd just like to say that staff has worked long and hard over the last year on this study. I do believe that we had a vision when we started. One of the things that we've come to is that we knew this was going to, we knew our downtown's going to redevelop. We wanted it to develop in a positive manner with a good plan. And we think that this is a good plan, and hope it is adopted. And then, we'll try to answer, if you would like for us to, some of these questions. I'll have a consultant here shortly.
What about the Highlands, Mr. Burns?
You talking about the 11 acres and?
Yes.
The 11 acres has actually, a little bit of history on it. It has been on the market for several years. It was actually slated years ago for medical-type uses. It's what it was actually marketed for. 11 acres, again, was on the market. I think they do have a contract. We have not seen a plan on that yet. We had talked to them initially for, as just a concept. There is a large part of that area that is wetlands, and it is in a drainage basin, and probably Mr. Huddleston has more information on it than I will. But I know there's areas of it that could be developed, areas of it that could not be developed, and could be filled and not. And Mr. Huddleston, would you like to talk a little bit about this area? We do know it is a very sensitive area as far as the drainage area. And I think he could probably give us a little more insight on the developable area of it and what can and can't be.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Vice Chairman Wade and members of the Planning Commission, Sam Huddleston with the City Engineering Department. We've followed this property, and Mr. Jakes said 10 to 13 years, but I think actually goes back maybe even closer to 25 years. And there was some work done there initially, perhaps even without permits. The property was addressed by the Corps of Engineers. So, some of the property donation there had to do with some early work that was done without permits, and that also resulted in seven acres across Sinking Creek being donated to the city. They did have approved plans. They had approved permits from the Corps of Engineers and TDEC to execute a development plan on the remaining 11 acres. With the passage of time, those permits have lapsed, and obviously, with the change to the Highland area with the relocation of Murfreesboro Medical and Middle Tennessee Medical, medical uses there were probably not appropriate. The property is encumbered with floodplain and floodway, and so that'll make some parts of the property that border Sinking Creek protected or difficult to develop. The property is also, has some recognized wetlands on it. Permits can be obtained to disturb those wetland areas and mitigation credits purchased and those sorts of things. The staff's look at this suggests to us that there are some developable areas adjacent to Highland, and then there's marginal areas as you approach Sinking Creek. But there would be some amount of the property that could be filled and developed. It really becomes, I think, partly economics and partly compliance with regulations on determining that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that, if you have any.
Chairman Wade, just to add on to that, you know, we can't really say whether or not the plan will be consistent with this plan, because we haven't seen the full design.
Okay.
I think that what we can say is that, after consultation with Mr. Gunther, the proposed use of, that has been discussed for that property, the condominiums, would, the use would be consistent. And of course, you know, the second component of consistency with regards to this plan is whether the design is consistent. And so, we really can't say that, because we don't have a plan to really comment on. But the use itself would be consistent with the mixed-use designation, the mixed-use character area that is shown for that tract.
And Chairman, also, there would be a rezoning required, so this would, this plan would have to come back in front of the Planning Commission and the City Council for approval, due to the fact that it would more likely come in as a planned development. So therefore, it would be subject to two public hearings, one here and one at the City Council.
And the Planning Commission and City Council would, if this is adopted tonight, would look at it as a guiding document in making sure that not only the use, but the form and design is consistent with this plan.
Okay. And then, Mr. Walker talked about public art. Is that?
The plan does, in the section with regards to Parks and Recreation and Open Space, definitely does allude to public art and the importance of it. And I know Ms. Pam Williams with our Parks and Recreation Department, who was one of the staff members who helped provide support to the Steering Committee, was an advocate for public art. And so, this plan definitely does show that as a key element of open space.
Okay. And then, I think the last one is traffic on Lidle?
Chairman, I had spoke with our traffic director extensively. In fact, one of the charrettes we had, myself and Ram Balachandra had actually manned that station. We did get a lot of concern about the Lidle Street improvements, especially on the end with a lot of residential homes. There is, and I totally, we totally agree, there are kind of two sides. You've got the commercial end, the residential. In the booklet, and Mr. Gunther may want to point that out here in just a moment to help us, we looked at several scenarios for that, as far as for walkability and also for traffic calming. The last thing we want that to turn into is a major thoroughfare. It is definitely a connector. But what some of the plans they looked at were, what we considered were, you know, allow parking or not. I mean, there's no, at this point in time, we have not decided on the plan for that. But we're very aware that we want to have traffic calming, we want to be able to control the speed of traffic. We understand the walk, that people want to be able to bike and walk. And Mr. Gunther, could you actually show those, if we can pull them up, and talk a little bit about that improvement at East Lidle?
Okay, if I could have the PowerPoint back on the screen. So, I think as Mr. Whitaker had mentioned, we looked at this carefully. There's two things happening. This is a connection point, an east-west connection point, I think that's been recognized. At the same time, working closely with Ram and other staff, we looked at what would that mean as far as the development of a street section. And I think that one of the things that works in the favor of a residential area, if you see the top part of this section view on this particular image, is showing what could happen in residential area. And one of those things is that you have a stronger delineation between the front yard and what are residential houses in the street. Right now, on Lidle Street, there is a lot of kind of undefined edge of pavement. There's quite honestly more pavement than you need in your travel lanes. So, our thought is that there may be, over time, an increase of traffic along the street. We think that's going to happen with the growth in the downtown area. But we believe that by clearly designated pedestrian ways, creating a strong curb and gutter with dedicated bike lanes, and actually narrow or travel lanes, even though the traffic might, volume might increase, our belief is that this type of street section can help keep it manageable and feel like a residential neighborhood, which tends to allow people to drive slower. So, it is going to be a balancing act, and I know it's going to take a lot of consideration with the Transportation Department in continuing to look at it. But we try to really emphasize pedestrian ways and bicycles on this route, more than adding travel lanes.
And one of the things I'd like to point out in considering these scenarios, they were working within the existing right-of-way. This was not, if I believe that's correct, not looking to try to go in and have to take any more right-of-way.
For most of the corridor, that's correct. You know, we had, we were going off GIS, which is a pretty high-level, you know, record of information. But I know that we, what we looked at, in most cases, these scenarios would fit in the right-of-way. And I will say that if they didn't, there's two routes. You can either take a small, very small portion of additional right-of-way, or you can make adjustments to these designs to fit them within the right-of-way.
And that was one of the concerns from the residents, that they didn't want to lose any of their property. And we understood that, and again, tried to design within the parameters that we have to work in.
Okay. Comments, questions from the commission?
Just while we've got this particular screen up, my emphasis in the past and will continue to be trying to improve the availability in Murfreesboro of multi-use paths. And I know that you're basically within the traditional box of what you And I know that you're basically within the traditional box of what you've got laid out here. And I don't think it's very safe to mix automobiles and bicycles, especially when you've got them passing in the business area there between the traffic and the parking. I think it's a recipe for disaster. I think that if we're going to be serious about trying to improve the opportunity for people to get around our city on bicycles and pedestrian, to be more pedestrian-friendly, I would much rather, on that top scenario, give up four feet of roadway and move it up to one of the sidewalks and go from a five-foot to a nine-foot, I think it really has to be ten-foot. So, give up five foot of roadway, one side have a pedestrian-friendly, multi-use path, and then the other side have a sidewalk, so that you really, you actually present a plan that makes it safe for the bicycles, safer for the traffic flow. And then, if you just don't want to encounter the strollers and the bicycles, this traditional sidewalk on the other side of the road, I think is a more applicable plan for what I foresee future transportation needs being.
That is a good point, Mr. Smitherman. There are design options outside of this section that we're showing that still work within that right-of-way. A couple that we've looked at would include doing a potential multi-use trail and actually having that, sharing bicycles and pedestrians. And there's also the opportunity for creating some type of much clearer separation between your dedicated bike lane and your travel lane, which would include two or three feet of striping and even physical barriers that kind of help denote it. And I think that what we recognized was that that would definitely need further study.
When we're looking at Lidle Street, I mean, from MTSU, I mean, I see tons of kids riding bicycles on a daily basis around MTSU campus. In order for them to access the downtown area is very difficult with the current infrastructure that we have in place. To simply draw a three-foot lane on the side of the road, I mean, we've seen the success that we have with Thompson Lane and Memorial Boulevard, I think, with how successful that isn't. And so, if we're serious about creating an environment where we really want to be pedestrian-friendly, there needs to be that buffer, and it has to be more of a standalone situation. And, I mean, I love every, it sounds like I'm complaining, and I'm not. I love everything in this package. But I do think that could use some more finessing.
Yes, we think there's warrant to that. There are certainly design tools to create that stronger separation that you're describing. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone that's been involved. Staff, for sure. Reagan Smith and Sterling Communications and all of the Steering Committee, and especially everyone that came out tonight. We love having a public hearing where we get to hear some positive things about what we're looking at. It's so refreshing, so thank you for taking your time to come out tonight and tell us your thoughts about this plan. I'm really excited about the plan, as I think most of us on the Planning Commission are. We're excited to see what we think can happen to our city. And we will eagerly await just the flood of applications that's going to come in from all of our builders and developers, and hope they're as excited about it as we are. But I think it's got just a lot of great, great, great things for our city. I think we've got only positive places to go here. And excited about both studies, but I think this one's really got a lot we can do on it, hopefully sooner than later, so.
I, too, would like to thank everyone that had participated in this process. I think it's a wonderful plan. And with that, I would recommend adoption.
Can I get a second?
Let me say one more comment, and I'll be very brief. We keep referring in Murfreesboro to the 2035 Plan, and I know that there's so much emphasis been put on that. I went back the other day and went back thirty-five years from where we're at today. And there was a study done on the downtown area. And in that study, it said that their concerns were traffic, parking, green space, and better use of second floors was what their goals were to achieve. Now, I guess what I want to iterate is make sure that we understand that nothing's going to happen here overnight. And even with the best-laid plans, there will have to be changes and deviations made. But this is a very, very good presentation. And I think that, I couldn't agree more, that it gives us a very bright look for the Bottoms area. It gives us a very bright look for the MTSU, the Highlands area, the redevelopment, and the areas that we have in the downtown area that have become blighted. It gives us an opportunity to rezone those and reuse those in a situation that will be beneficial to everyone who's a citizen of Murfreesboro. So, with that, I agree that this is a great opportunity for us, and I hope we take full advantage of it and implementation on it as quickly as possible.
Are you second anymore?
Are you second?
That's a second.
Yes.
Very good.
So moved, approved. The second thing?
We have to vote.
Oh, we've got to vote, Jesus.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against? Sorry, Ms. Jones.
You straight.
Okay.
I'm rushing, I'm sorry. Second thing on the agenda tonight is Historic Bottoms Plan Study 2016-S-101, City of Murfreesboro Planning Department applicant.
I'll take it. Thank you, sir. One year ago, last Saturday, a small group of us risked life and limb to trek across seven lanes of Broad Street to go visit the Bottoms. Randy, Kevin, Terry, Jennifer, we're all part of that group. We were accompanied by the county archivist and the state historian. And we got to learn a lot about the very rich history of the area that we call the Bottoms. We were very privileged to take that trip, and that has resounded with us throughout this planning process. That trip was documented, by the way, by WPLN in Nashville, and that story was aired nationally on NPR back in January. I would encourage you, if you haven't heard it, to go find that on the Internet. While we were in the Bottoms, we saw a lot of constraints, but we saw many more opportunities and potential solutions. And with that visit and subsequent staff and stakeholder interviews, a vision for that area began to take shape. That vision has been refined over the last year, first by staff, many of whom are here today from various departments. It was a truly interdisciplinary effort. They offered assistance, guidance, and their expertise throughout this process. And our department is very thankful to them for offering that. That vision was also refined by citizens, over two hundred of whom participated in three public events. They took time out of their evenings to come and share their concerns and their ideas, many of which are reflected in this document that you have in front of you. And finally, our Steering Committee, who I cannot thank enough. I send them an email, probably way too much, to tell them how much we are thankful for their service to the city. They gave their time and their energy to this effort, and I do want to recognize them. The members of our Steering Committee for Historic Bottoms were John Harney, Ron Washington, Doug Cook, Dale Robertson, Gloria Christie, Scott Foster, Bruce Hooper, Dave Baughman, Tara McDougall, Ryan Maloney, Paul Latour, Chase Salas, Lee Nelson, and Sean Gilliland. Many of them are here tonight, and I hope that they'll get up and speak during the public hearing. Staff recommends that you adopt this study and all of the recommendations contained within it. And if you do so, this document, we hope, will serve as a guidebook for future development in the Historic Bottoms. We'll turn it over to Kevin or Randy, I'm not sure who's going to get up. And staff can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Didn't intend to get back up and speak, but I forgot to thank one group, and that is the staff. I tell you, I have to compliment you on what a great staff you have, how they think outside the box, the input that they provided. I don't know if you know this, but when we had our visioning session in this, we were in quite a dilemma, because we had over a hundred people show up at that visioning session, and the staff jumped in as facilitators. I think every department was represented by a staff member that was facilitating a table, so much that Keith didn't even get to facilitate a table. So he just, he and I got to kind of roam around and just observe. So it was true, it was a great experience to see the staff just kind of immerse themselves in this whole process on both projects. And I didn't want to have that left unsaid tonight. So I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Randy.
Is the PowerPoint available?
It's the X side of the.
Wonderful. Certainly with no less enthusiasm that I'm up here to discuss this study than North Highlands. But I will say that many of the input sessions, much of the information that I covered in North Highland is very similar to this. So, what I'd like to do is really highlight some of the real differences, if you don't mind. And once again, you know, as Donald had pointed out, we had excellent Steering Committee, very focused staff, and a lot of excitement from the community. And as you'll see now, we're discussing the area that's highlighted in red. But, as I mentioned before, both of these plans really overlap, and the whole core of this is the downtown. And, you know, the input sessions on Historic Bottoms were just as vigorous as North Highland. So what kind of rose to the surface of this study that maybe was a little different than North Highland? The one thing that was interesting that was very much the same was the idea of expanding downtown. That became loud and clear in both studies, and really told us that Broad Street needed to feel more like a zipper that basically sleeved together these two areas as opposed to a wall that divided it. So how to do that is really a challenge, quite honestly. There's really three options we have. One is at-grade crossings that need to be improved. You know, we need to have better signalization, possibility of some type of safe haven for pedestrians in the middle abroad, and definitely something that's a lot clearer and marketed with, you know, safe pedestrian lights when you're crossing. The other possibilities are going over or going under. So, one of the things that we have now is actually a greenway that goes underneath Broad, but most people don't know it's there. And so, I think one of the things that became loud and clear with this study was, how do we connect better to that greenway? How do we enhance the understanding that the creek is there, and that when you're traveling in Broad, you have a way to get underneath through the greenway? And the third thing was going over. There was discussion, and I'll show you some graphic depictions of a possible pedestrian bridge that could cross over. I think the key to that, and the key to making that work, is doing it in the right place and connecting it with some other elements. For example, possibly parking structures, possibly multi-use buildings that have the ability to incorporate a bridge into the structure. And so, it needs to be done at the right place. And it also needs to be recognized that even the value of that bridge, it is located at one singular point in the corridor. We're going to need to look at more ways than one across Broad Street. So, another challenge that was very unique to the Historic Bottoms area is that the road network that's there now is very difficult. It's very hard to get in and out off of Broad Street. It's very hard to connect what the parcels are there in the Historic Bottom areas with what's around it. So we looked at improving the street network, and we think that that's going to continue to be another effort that needs attention with the Transportation Department. And the other thing that was really loud and clear, that was kind of unique, that surprised us as how much enthusiasm there was about it, was the whole idea of daylighting Town Creek. And the idea that the creek that's been underground could actually function as a natural element that highlights open space, creates, you know, as we mentioned, for economics to work. People need that sense of destination. And the idea of daylighting the creek was something that was unique to the Historic Bottoms area. And the last thing I'm going to mention that was kind of distinctly different was there is currently now several facilities that serve the homeless population in the Historic Bottoms area. And it was recognized that that was an important, those facilities were important to the community. They were important to serving that need. And the idea of creating a task force in the city that will continue to look at that issue, which is not just a Historic Bottoms issue, but really something that is ranging far outside of just the Historic Bottoms area. And just, there is, we know there is a task force in place now, and the idea that continuing to look at that issue was important. Here's a future land use map, much similar to North Highland. It is, these are character areas. This isn't a rezoning, but we think it'll shape the zoning decisions of the future. And what you'll see is that red area that we call downtown is now actually part of the Historic Bottoms. The pink area, once again, a mixed-use node that we think could go up in density, and it would also be able to embrace the mixture of commercial with residential and office. And then, the areas that you see on the south-eastern portion of Broad really become a little bit more suburban in nature and traditional in the commercial corridor type of approach. And, you know, highlighting the mixed-use node, I just want to emphasize here again that for this to succeed, we think that it's going to take more than one parcel. It's going to take consolidation of parcels. It's going to take the city helping developers to that joint venture between private and public sector that says, how can we do this in a way where it's not just little piecemeal things, but something that has character and something that has the type of shape that you see in these images? You know, you could start to pick up some of the industrial character that's down there, and very similar to what has been seen in some other areas within Nashville. And we think that, you know, there's already some of that occurring within the Historic Bottoms, and we could embrace that. The other thing that was really distinct about this area is you've got all these wonderful park assets, but there's not a lot of linkage between them. So the whole idea of possibly creating that green space corridor and linking that together with Town Creek being daylighted was a very big idea. What if you had something like an amphitheater within the parks area that could serve more than just David Makin, Uncle David Makin days, but several very large venue events? It could be very exciting for this district. And we created, once again, a development scenario that overlaid the economics with the land use and gave us a picture of how this could shape out. And demonstrated an illustration of that. And you'll see in here that bridge that we had talked about, possibly a public parking garage. We think the parking question is an important one that's going to take further study, because you can create all these densities, and you can create all these wonderful places for people that want to come. But if you don't match it with parking needs, obviously, you've got a real challenge. Once again, public art, if you had some of these open spaces. If you can picture in the upper-left corner of this illustration where Town Creek is daylighted, and that connects to Cannonsburg, and then you have a greenway that connects to the Discovery Center, maybe this is the place for that natural and cultural trail that we discussed. But once people arrive in Murfreesboro, they get on this trail, and they could spend the whole day connecting to these destination points. And once again, I won't go over these specific elements again, but the importance of implementation can't be underemphasized. The need to consider not only this plan, but how do you commit infrastructure to support it? How do you finance it? How do you make sure to manage it? And how do you market it? Those will all be very important considerations to continue. So I will conclude my presentation at this point. Want to leave plenty of room for discussion and your questions.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
We're now ready to open our public hearing again. Just like I stated before, rules are three minutes for individuals, five minutes for if you're representing a group. And please state your name and address when you come to the podium. Now open for public hearing.
Hi, my name's Gib Backland. I live at 333 East Lidle Street in Steve Baughman's backyard. And I'm a member of the Historic Zoning Commission in Murfreesboro as well. I just want to applaud all of you, the planning commission, the staff, the consultants, on what I think are two really great plans. I just want to highlight a couple of points, four points. First off, who, is there a better cheerleader for Murfreesboro than Bart Walker? Or for MTSU than Gloria Bonner? And I bet she's going to get up and speak. But I, I want to just point out that this shows great imagination. I think talking about the bridge over Broad, all you have to do is go to Nashville and look at Shelby Street Bridge and see what a great asset that has become for Nashville. Arts district, if you've been to Paducah, Kentucky, they have an incredible arts district, which this Bottoms area could become. I'm interested in public art, as is Bart. I think that, that's a great possibility. Transportation, I want to mention again, as I've mentioned at all of the planning meetings that I've attended, 2035, Bottoms, and Highland Avenue, is the Complete Streets Program would offer many of the opportunities. It would solve the problem that I think you mentioned, Eddie, about transportation down Lidle Street. And I am concerned about Lidle Street because I live there. I would not mind you take my right away, because then I have less lawn to mow, and that would be good. Being a member of the Historic Zoning Commission, I am concerned about retaining those elements of historic character all the way down Manny, which is also a National Registered District. And I think we have to be careful so that we don't lose that character on Manny and on Main Street, East Main Street Historic District. And then finally, the, the creeks, daylighting the creeks and, and protecting Lidle Creek, Town Creek, the wetlands at Oakland's are all very important, because all of the creeks in town, I believe, Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, are impaired. That is, they do not serve all of the needs that a mean free-flowing stream would serve. So we have to do, we have to continue to work to improve the water quality in all of our waterways, including the spring at Oakland's. And so those are just the points that I would make, and I, again, thank you for the efforts on the plan. Thanks.
Thanks, Gib.
My name is Gloria Christie, and I live at 714 North Maple. I'm a business owner downtown, and I'm also a resident downtown, and I also was a member of the Bottom. And I have some fabulous friends now that got to work together on this amazing project. I think there's a lot of irony that came to the surface for me, and I wanted to share this with you. In the 1950s, my grandmother was a part of the, the planning and repurposing of the Bottom, and here I was able to participate in this era. So I'm just really thrilled about that. My grandmother was the first policewoman in Murfreesboro, Nina Shacklet, and she was also a social worker. And I, we found with our work on the Bottoms some of the same issues that Granny had to deal with in the 1950s, 60s, and 70s. They're still the same, so Eddie, they got, they're ongoing. But I just wanted to say what dear friends we have, and how, how some of these things that we planned, I think that are going to be incredibly powerful, and I think we need to be patient as we work forward with this. I had no idea when we moved Uncle Dave Macon Days from the Public Square in Murfreesboro in 1989 to Cannonsburg. I had my choice in those days of Oakland's or Cannonsburg, because I was education director at Oakland's Mansion at the time, and thought that was a consideration. But Cannonsburg had just the right environment, and I, and now here we are again, making plans to make an incredible arts and entertainment district there. And I just want to thank you for considering this, and hats off to y'all, letting us and allowing us to do this, and giving us this kind of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christie.
Hi, Charlie Clark. I live at 209 Kingwood Drive here in Murfreesboro. I can sort of follow up off of what Ms. Christie just said, it's a sharing a bit of the irony. When the Bottoms was first redeveloped, my family's business was actually one of the things that moved into it. My great-grandfather owned the Farmers Produce Company. It was on Vine Street. It was associated with what used to be known as Mink Slide. And when they opened up the Bottoms, moved over there and re-founded it as Clark Iron Metal. That was in 1962. So he worked there, my grandfather worked there, my fathers worked there for 30 years, and now my brother and I work there. And, you know, I'm, I'm not here to oppose this plan in any way. It seems to be, you know, a well-thought-through and good plan, and certainly that's not my area of expertise. I guess I'm just making sort of three points. Clark Iron Metal wasn't consulted as a stakeholder. We weren't interviewed. We weren't invited to sit on the steering committee. And I'm, I'm not complaining about that necessarily. I'm just saying that I feel like, for that reason, we haven't had a chance to, you know, talk a little bit about some of the practicalities of our situation there. We have a lot of infrastructure. We have really substantial investment. Relocating a scrapyard is not the easiest thing in the world to do. And I think there's often a lack of understanding about how our business works from the way we see it. You know, we see it from a different perspective. And there are 400 tons of scrap metal moving in and out of there every week. It's a major recycling center. It's, it's a major recycling center for the entirety of our county and for surrounding counties. It's a, it's a major center. And so I guess I'm just inviting, you know, the, the planning commission, or whoever is going to be taking the next steps on implementation, to come talk to us and, you know, find out a little bit more, you know, our situation, and figure out how we're going to work, you know, through this, and how we're going to make progress coming forward. Yeah, I think that's pretty much all I had to say on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I'm back. Bobby Turman, 420 East Burton. I've been to almost all of the, the visioning groups that led up to both of these plans, as well as Jones Boulevard, and, and basically any other community programs that I can be involved in, that I have time for. I have to say that this has been a fantastic effort by everyone involved, and I'm 100% behind at least the spirit of everything that's being done, if not the letter. There are some things that I don't agree with, but by and large, almost everything I'm a big fan of. Some of you I've had the pleasure of talking to at some of these meetings and other places. And one of the big things that I always like to talk about is infrastructure. And I think that there is a very great opportunity here for our city to rewrite its infrastructure, at least in these areas. And the thing that I want to do is to encourage, and what I'd like to encourage is boldness, not to do things that are safe, like just concrete sidewalks or whatever, or the same existing sort of, sort of run-of-the-mill types of buildings. Things that I would like to see would be innovations in infrastructure. I'd like to see the use of green energy technologies. Solar-powered streetlights would be a no-brainer. That's technology that's decades old. It's not something scary that we should be afraid of to try to implement. And it's not that the city even has to do it, when we have developers that are coming into areas. Let's offer them incentives to implement these sorts of things. The multi-use pathways that I know Eddie Smotherman is a big proponent of, you know, these are great things for residential options. Things like pocket neighborhoods, pocket communities as an alternative to just building tall buildings for density, and as a way to keep neighborhoods connected. For connectivity, dedicated downtown open-air trolley, that's something that would, I mean, there used to be one way back then in the 1800s. I don't expect anyone to remember that, but it was there. And it would be neat from a historical, from a tourism perspective, why not revive, revive that trolley route and use it downtown as a way to bring in tourism? A lot of the success of this mixed-use residential commercial is going to be, is growth. And we got to get people to come here and spend their dollars. You've already got the downtown dollar. We're here, we live here, we work here. What we need to grow and to attract bigger and better businesses and residences is to get people that live out by Veterans or out by Dejarnet to have a reason to come in and spend those dollars here. And, you know, things like, things like, like a tree with wind turbines in it, in a public green space area, that powers kiosks that control parking, things like this. These are all things that I think Murfreesboro could really become known for in this area. And not, not all of these things are good ideas or a good fit for us, but what I'd like to see is an emphasis on looking towards these things. And if anybody has any questions, I have plenty of info. Be glad to share it.
Thank you, Mr. Turman. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Dave Baughman. I live out in wonderful Milton, Tennessee, at 4006 River Lane. But I'm a stakeholder down in the Bottoms. I've got Allied Boiler &amp; Supply on the corner of Front and Castle Street, where the old Minglin Elrod Building is, right across from Hooper Supply. So it's been awesome being a part of this process, having input, having discussion, having fellowship with new brothers and sisters has been just great also. But as we got into the study and we got talking, one of the things that really came out, and on page 16, was the quantitative community input. And on that was all those wonderful things. Kevin talked about them. But as we got down to it, the very highest priority out of all that vision and input from the community was the homeless in the area. And we're a vibrant, healthy community, but the sign of a vibrant, healthy community is how we address the needs of those that are less fortunate. And we've got a tremendously large homeless population directly in this particular area. And in the development of Nashville, in the Gulch in particular, the rescue mission was integrated within that particular development area also. And so I don't want to lose sight of the possibility of the Murfreesboro Rescue Mission possibly being within this same Bottoms area, because as we develop, we want to really have this rescue mission within a mile, if possible, of where the homeless population is really most concentrated. So that's one of the things to bring up. And it was great to be able to see that within the vision and the discussion. The other, though, pertains to the, the wetlands in particular. And as we're daylighting Town Creek, if any of you have walked back through the Discovery Center any time recently and seen the wetlands, you're not seeing much of the water. You're seeing parrot feather. Parrot feather has infiltrated that to a high degree, and I don't want to lose sight that we've got to save those wetlands, or Town Creek's not going to be much of Town Creek at, at some point in time. It can be one of the best things that Murfreesboro has done. It can be also one of our biggest black eyes if we don't attend to the wetlands itself, or Town Creek is flowing out of. And then transportation, OMG is all I can say. The whole transportation issue of getting down Front Street, Castle Street, the train-blocking Old Salem at any given point in time, those are all issues within transportation that is going to be interesting to see how that part of the equation is really looked at and, and come about with. But those are items I just wanted to bring to the table and put out there as food for thought. And it's been good to be a part of this process and to be on the steering committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baughman. Anyone else?
How's it going? I'm Doug Cook, 204 Apollo Drive, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. 2014, I was walking around the property with Gloria, and we were kind of plotting and planning on how to improve the festival Uncle Dave Macon Days, and I had some festivals and show business stuff. So took a look and know the area pretty good. You know, my first impression was, you know, I should lock my doors. You know, if it's at night, you know, it's like a black spot, you know, there's just not much going on in this area. And it's a, a really good property. And when I studied the historic value of it and the location and everything about Murfreesboro, I got pretty excited about it and presented a, a couple of concepts of, of kind of redeveloping the area with no borders, nothing. I mean, just for me, it was just, all right, let's bring out the bulldozers and make this thing look really good. I travel a lot. I go to a lot of places. I've seen a lot of big ideas executed. I'm a part of doing impossible things every year. I just wrapped up the 15th halftime show. And so I've heard crazy ideas. I've seen things that you just think can't happen. And when people really go through and, and work through every issue, every problem, you can really do great things. And this whole time, after I got a Skype call from Gary, I think I was in Beijing, China, when they wanted to, you know, when Shane reached out for the steering, steering committee, and like, he, you know, Skyped me. I forget what time it was, but it was definitely an odd time. But I was excited about it and was happy to join in, and working with Randy and, and his team, and, and all the city people that not only worked for the city, but the public that came out, it was just a really neat thing to see the, the excitement about it, and the fact that pretty much every issue was brought to light, from the homeless, traffic, you know, just getting artsy about it, bringing the, the light up to, for the, for the town river, or creek, sorry. Couple of thoughts I have about all of this is that understanding history and the fact that Murfreesboro has got such a rich history, that you're not really building on an idea. It's, it's something that's already happened. There's so much there with the Princess Theater and the, the whole history and, and the Bottoms, and Civil War, and, and just there's so much that we can build on historically, that we can grab from to get architectural ideas, and really keep the idea of Murfreesboro versus Nashville, which I always feel like we live in the shadows of Nashville. Every time I do any kind of interviews or anything, I proudly say Murfreesboro rather than Nashville, because I, you know, I feel like it stands on its own two legs. And I feel like with this big idea, there are big challenges, but there's big solutions out there. And I think this whole process has been really good. There's been a lot of fellowshipping, and I feel like once this is considered and accepted, I'd like to look at something else that we could put together as far as another committee that follows through with this, to get the word out to the developers and to the art districts, and maybe we could do some fundraising, you know, do some press kind of stuff and kind of wow them. I'm more than happy to support and do anything I can, design-wise, promotional-wise. You know, I, I have a, a lot of friends that do things that can do, you know, an event that we can get the word out, you know, not only locally, but, you know, get nationally going. The only other comment I think I can kind of solidify what I think is, is we're not just daylighting, you know, Town Creek, we're daylighting the fact that Murfreesboro stands on its own two feet and can be recognized, you know, across the nation, even the world. So I, I just want to thank the committee, everyone that we worked with, and, and all the consultants, and it was really a pleasure to be a part of it. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Anyone else? If not, let's close our public hearing. Staff?
Chairman, if I may answer a few of the questions that came up. The first one I'd like to talk about is Mr. Clark. I would like to point out that in no way was he left purposely off the steering committee. We only had so many slots that There's a lot of work to be done, and I would value his input. One of the things in talking about his business that is unique, if the reason that we actually separated the Highland and the Bottoms area is because there may be, we may be trying to pull them back together, but there's an industrial area in the Bottoms. In fact, he has a salvage or metal. He stated that there were 400 tons of scrap metal comes through his yard. And that industrial uses that are in the Bottoms is what actually separated the two because of residential and industrial uses. It's also the exact thing that attracts businesses to the Bottoms, is businesses like he has that actually wants people to go there to be unique. In fact, we've had several businesses come to us that want to relocate in the Bottoms. We have a brand-new building that's going to be built, and it's going to have an industrial architecture to it. Part of that comes because of the uniqueness of the Bottoms. We don't want to lose that. We want to keep that. And one thing I'd like to point out, if you go into Nashville, if you're coming in 2440, if you come around and you see the stadium, you see everything downtown, the one thing that you will see is Steiner Lift. With all the growth, and I still think it's Steiner Lift to this day, with all the growth, that yard is still there today. It has not moved. It's not went anywhere. It's not the intentions of this study to displace anybody that's in the Bottoms area. If businesses come in, want to relocate here, and they want to purchase a piece of property to do such, that would be their prerogative. But it was not our intention, or nor is our intention, to displace anybody in the process of this. I just wanted to point that out.
Could you Skype Mr. Clark?
Pardon?
Could you Skype him?
Did not Skype him, but I'll be happy to.
Okay.
Technology is not really my friend, nor is time zones evidently. But I would also like to thank the staff that has worked on both of these for the last year and the consultants. But mostly, I would want to thank the public because this is not the Planning Department's study. This is the people that live in the city of Murfreesboro. It's their study, and it was their input, and that's how we got where we are today. And I would like to thank mostly the public for coming out and the involvement. It was really fun and interesting to watch all the different scenarios and how they pulled them together as this came together. And I think we have a great opportunity here to watch our city redevelop and do it in a very positive way. And as far as the roads, one of the things that I'd like to point out is we keep hearing about traffic, traffic. We all know that that is an issue. We do have a consultant working on a 2040 major thoroughfare plan. One of the things in the Highland and the Bottoms study, we challenge them to look at, is how can we take some pressure off of Broad Street so that we could maybe make that pedestrian crossings? Or we know that the easiest way to do it is go over the top, but also, is there an alternate way where you could have pedestrian crossings at some of the locations and by doing that, by taking some of that traffic off the downtown area? So hopefully, in the near future, we'll have that 2040 traffic plan and see what they come back with.
All right. Anyone on the commission has a comment?
I hope my family's watching on TV tonight because I need to say thank you to them because I know every one of you in this audience just about, from an experience, that something's going on in our community right now. And I guess they think I'm never at home. They must not like me very well because I'm never there, and they don't complain. But the reality of it is, is, you know, a couple nights ago, the Historical Group was having a meeting at the Carriage House, and Gibb and David and you guys were out there. And we were studying and learning about Murfreesboro. And to your point, I feel sometimes like I rode that trolley that you talked about that run down Main Street and down Maple Street, which was Lebanon Road at that time. But the exciting part about this plan is really, truly, we get to look at the concepts of maybe a bridge over Broad Street that would be a pedestrian-friendly access point to the other side of the street. To Gloria's point, locating the Uncle Dave Makin' Days across the road was a fantastic location, but it is a logistics nightmare to try and move the people from the traffic, where they park, through the traffic, and to get them to that property. And so this gives us an opportunity to look at a real solution to help that develop. The problem that we've got, I hope people understand, that most of those invasive plants and species that are in that pond was generated by either somebody's aquarium or somebody bringing that into this area. They dumped it into the creek, thinking they were doing the right thing. But if you've got invasive species, please don't dump them into our water system because ultimately, that's where they wind up, and it does create a huge problem. The plan, I think, will ultimately be a very understanding of the current property rights of the property owners who live in that or currently reside in that area with their businesses. The intention is not to damage your business, but it's really to create such a great environment in that area that your property becomes so valuable that it has a better use. And if, and then it'll be your choice to determine whether or not it's a good idea for you to sell your property and relocate, or whether or not you just want to stay in that spot for historical significance that may lie within your family. But it will be your choice. It's not a situation that we're coming in and saying, your business is going to move because we have this plan. So the, I don't want to take credit for this, but last Saturday at Coffee at the Ransom School, we have it every, before I get too far away from that, Gibb, when is our privet cleanup for the Stone Trevor Battlefield coming up?
It's at Oak Fork Park on Saturday at 8:00 first from 8:30 till plus provider.
Okay. Anybody who wants to really get involved with getting rid of invasive species, there's a great opportunity for you. Last Saturday during the Coffee at the Ransom Schoolhouse, we had a conversation about problems that we're having with trash and cemeteries and stuff, and we're continuously trying to get that cleaned up. But in the cemetery that actually lays, it's right next to the Bottoms area down there, it was a homeless home for quite some time. We've tried to get that cleaned up and be respectful to those grave sites and stuff. So the homeless population was moved out of the cemetery, probably was never the best place for them to be to begin with. But after moving them out, it was interesting because they moved basically to a bridge area that was close by and probably gives them better shelter. But it was brought to my attention, I met with the city manager and assistant city manager today, and it sounds like such a simple idea of something I'd never thought of. And truly, I'll give Alan Gooch 100% credit for this idea. But he had gone over and talked to the people underneath that bridge, and of course, it looks like a landfill underneath the Church Street Bridge out there right now. And it was interesting because it had never crossed my mind of why the cemetery looked as bad as it did. And the reason is, there wasn't trash pickup at the cemetery. And so homeless people don't have garbage cans. And it just never crossed my mind that, well, what do you do with your garbage if you don't have a garbage can? So I met with the city manager, assistant city manager today. We're going to get dumpsters put out there next to the bridge. And it seems like such a simple solution, but the people under the bridge have already applauded the idea and said, hey, we'll be glad to use the dumpsters if you'll just make them available to us. So there's opportunities here if you're just willing to get out there and listen and talk to the people who you think may be the biggest obstacle that you have, that we can make progress and improvement to our city. And I've spoken much longer than I intended to, but in closing, thank you for everybody who was involved with the planning of the Bottoms project, from the committees to the staff to the public who came to the meetings. Your input, we listened to it, and I think we came up with a very successful and encouraging plan. And thank you all. That was my motion.
You're welcome.
That was the motion? What was the other?
Well, Mr. Smotherman, I'd gladly second that motion.
All right. Let us vote.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? So have it. Approved. Anything else?
Chairman Wade, I just wanted to, I'd be remiss if I didn't publicly thank two groups of stakeholders. One, being the city staff who put many long hours into attending the Steering Committee meetings and giving their valuable input and expertise. Several of them had to leave already tonight, and several of them couldn't attend. But many city staff members, as Donald mentioned, from many different departments, contributed valuable time and effort and expertise, and we sincerely appreciate that. The second group that I would like to thank are consultants. I can't tell you how much of a pleasure it's been to work with them on these two projects, their professionalism, their expertise, their responsiveness, and the, just the general sense of collaboration that they have, that they have really, have really brought to this project. So Randy and Kevin with Reagan Smith Associates, our new downtown residents, newly, newly, new office here at the NHC Building. Keith and Lee from Common Ground Studio brought some invaluable expertise to the design and form of these two areas. And Terry Sterling Donovan with Sterling Communications, as I mentioned, did an excellent job getting the word out about these studies. And Randall Gross from Randall Gross Development Economics, one of the smartest people I've ever, I've ever come across, very, just a wealth of information and knowledge. And I know he's not here tonight, but just a pleasure to work with and get to know him and all the team. So we'd like to publicly thank them for all their hard work on these two projects.
All right. I want to thank everyone as well. This is two really good projects to put our city on the map because we're changing. And with the community input that we've had on this, everybody's excited. And I look forward to good things from the city councilmen and our Planning Commission as we move forward. Mr. Director, anything else?
No, sir.
Nothing, sir?
Meeting adjourned.